It's recorded.
Okay. Let's get started. Folks that aren't here right now and won't be here for various reasons, Dorsey. Richard is, yeah. Richard is on his way. He's just running a little bit late. We have, I'm trying to figure out you guys, why are you guys are here with Ashley? Meaning, meaning Joe.
For something else?
Yeah. What did I miss?
What do we?
Because I didn't know these guys were here. The DGS folks, did you know they were going to be here?
No, for what reason? Oh, to talk about the issue with the tower, I think.
Okay.
Because we have to do the emergency funds to repair the tower out front.
Okay. All right. So what we'll do is, we'll start with Ashley. You guys are familiar with Ashley Moore from Capitalize All. And Sarah's over there also. They're going to do this. Hey, can I get a little bit of attention over here? Am I going to have to start smashing books on the table? So we'll start with Ashley and Sarah. You guys just coming up. So that'll give, that'll give Richard time to get here because I didn't know they were even supposed to be here.
Hey, guys. So Ashley's asking, I'm just going to do a really quick sort of set the stage. You guys have heard this spiel from us nine times. It's around nine for the regional councils. So Ashley's going to go through a little bit of the overview and then introduce the projects for this year. I think the only thing that I wanted to say before I turn it over to Ashley is a reminder that this is just allowing projects to seek grant funding and then get fully vetted by all of those state agencies. If there's anything else that needs to be put back in front of the city Albany's planning boards, zoning boards, common council, all of that will happen as the process goes forward. What this is today is just erring on the side of letting projects seek funding to try to get them to be able to move forward. All of the regulatory requirements can be handled after the fact, after the projects get funding. Ashley's going to touch on this too. These are works in progress. The grants are not due until the end of the month. So each of these projects will be working on that grant all the way through the end of the month. There may be details that change. That's absolutely normal. But they've done their best for today to be able to get in front of you for resolutions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Every year it seems like there's one that you know about but we can't know about it. And then either glass windows or any of those hanging up.
If we knew? No, it's usually, it's things that either, so sorry for stealing some of your thunder on this, but we do a mass solicitation every year. We keep up with potential applicants throughout the year. Neighborhood associations, you all are thousands and thousands of persons contact list to try to cull what the projects are.
Oh, you don't change because we have some.
Yeah, usually there are some projects that may or may not apply and maybe decide late and they're still looking together and that's where we'll get something added or slipped in at the end where it's something that we didn't know about.
What if there was some that, I guess it was almost secretive what was going on. They didn't want the council to know.
Not that I know. I don't know. No, I mean, anything that you all have seen late has been because they came to us late because they were either getting their application together or they somehow missed sort of the mass correspondence that we don't.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that you guys will be getting are the projects that don't need a resolution. So there are, you know, like about five proposals that don't need a common council resolution or, you know, external applicants that are for programs that don't require it.
And there may be additional applications even beyond that that we don't know about that don't even come in because we're not seeing our letters of support from anybody. But again, there would never, we haven't included anything that just sort of super tough to get.
So you have a project overview in front of you. You also received the blank project intake form just as a reference. That's the form that we use. We tweak it a little bit every year in case there's additional questions that we need to ask to get information from applicants. And just as a little reminder, I did send the project intake forms for these projects out at the end of June when we received them. So you had that information. This is just the overview that I sent out this morning. And then I'm going to walk you through it. It's six projects. There's seven resolutions required. One of the projects does need two resolutions from two funding sources. So with that, I'll just kind of walk through program by program. The first one is the Environmental Protection Fund Grants Program for Parks Preservation and Heritage. That's through the Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. And the first application and project up for tonight is the Lincoln Park East End Improvement Project. So as you guys know, through Lincoln Park, the city went through a master planning project. This was one of the priority projects that came through that process through the community, really adding recreational areas into the park in an underused outdated area of the park with equipment. So adding basketball courts, players, beachers, benches, fitness stations, picnic pavilion, really all those other amenities to the park that are really in desperate need. And so the project comes to a total project cost of about 1.1 million, slightly over, and the grant being requested through EPF is 600,000. That's the maximum grant that can be requested. And the project meets all of the matching requirements for the program. It's considered an impoverished area based on the park's skyline. So it has a smaller matching requirement than other areas. And, you know, we're surpassing that because of the maximum award amount. And you'll see here it's in compliance with the strategic plan for the capital region, the Capital 2020 Plan, and some of the strategies for Albany 2030. Does anybody, I can break for questions here if anybody has any questions for Anne Marie on this project. Also, another Lincoln Park project. You'll see a lot of Lincoln Park in this tonight. This one is through the Water Board, however. And so Joe Coffey's here to help with questions. This is a standalone project in Lincoln Park in support of the Beaver Creek Clean River Project. It's really to abate combined sewer surface discharges within the ravine in the park and support environmental biodiversity. And they're going to work in partnership with Green, with the Thomas O'Brien Academy of Science and Technology for green infrastructure to really help the students, you know, connect with that project. It'll create a community garden and trail enhancements within the park for passive recreational use community residents. So I think this is a project that you guys should be pretty familiar with.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, quite a bit. So I'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions, any further questions to Joe. But ultimately, project cost for today is a $2.15 million project seeking the maximum grant through EPF of 600,000, seeking a million dollar grant also through the Water Quality Improvement Project Program. So I'm not going to go through this project twice. It's seeking two resolutions, one through WQIP and one through EPF. And additional financing for the project will be sought either through the EFC State Revolving Fund financing or other supplemental financing. So as at present, it meets the matching requirements for the program and is totally in alignment with all the regional and city plans.
Is the school district paying for any of that or is that all? Is the school district paying for any of that? Is that, that's no school district?
And educational component, is it for the duration of the construction or will it be longer term?
I believe it's after the project has been, the educational component is after construction or is that after the project?
If you remember, we had two parts of the project. One is the satellite facility. This is in the ravine area. So a portion of the project is filled to get it so that we don't surcharge. And what we're looking for here is grant money to support the recreational elements that we talked about that we had on some of the rentals that we shared with you. So it's really part of the construction project.
Next project under this funding source is in a separate category. It's in the Historic Preservation Component of the Parks Program. This is the Women's Club of Albany Project Accessibility Water Reiniation and Renovation. Women's Club is located at 725 Madison Avenue. So I know you got some information about that earlier this week. Really, this is a project that is a contributing component to the Washington Park Historic District. And as such, you know, they're a vital gateway anchor to the district. They're having some, you know, problems with the building, really creating safety issues at this point. Water coming into the building, water infiltration and other things. And they need, you know, entrances renovated, masonry and wood restoration, water remediation, as I said, ancillary electrical work. They also need some work on the entrance to make ADA accessible. So that's a really, that's a big priority for this project. This project specifically has been trying for this grant in past years. So this is one, you know, they're really, really seeking this funding and it's critical to the project. Total project cost is 198,000. They'll be seeking 148,500 from the EPF grant. And the Women's Club of Albany is prepared to put in a match of 49,500. So they're meeting their matching requirements. And this project is also in alignment with the goals and strategies of the region and the city. Any questions for Mary? Next one, back into the parks category for EPF, we have the Tricentennial Park Redevelopment Project. This is also an application that has been submitted for this grant in past years. I think it's probably been tweaked a little bit or narrated or tweaked a little bit to include some additional amenities incorporating free Wi-Fi in partnership with Albany Public Library and solar powered charging stations, powered lighting in the trees, smart parking technologies and others, new paving and greenery, really allowing better use of the park, really allowing it to be open year round, things that, you know, aren't actually happening at present day. So these improvements will be a better amenity for downtown residents and visitors alike. It's really a graded place making project, which is a priority for the regional council process. And so this project is, the total project cost of a million dollars. They're requesting the maximum award amount from EPF of 600,000. Other schools of funding include the National Grid and East Street Grant of 250,000 and the bid will be putting in 150,000. This project meets the matching requirements and is in alignment with all of the regional council and city priorities.
The primary concern with every job, will they be local companies providing?
I mean, we would do that. I believe it is required to adhere to the city current policy. So we would be put out our piece of our PD gives concept drawings that were created by CHA. They're designated services. So we would, part of that project would be about 100,000 in design engineering work, most likely going to local firms. And then once the design is finalized, we will get that to be used. It would go off to the construction. It would go off to the construction. It is a small project. We, whatever the state requirements would have, most of the.
Usually EPF is 30% MWE. So switching funding sources, this is going to be the DEC EFC Wastewater Infrastructure Engineering Planning Grant Program. That's an outflow through New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and Environmental Facilities Corporation. There is one project under this program. That's Albany Water Board, South Pearl Street, Arch Street, CSO Improvements. Really what this project is, is an engineering study looking at alternatives for improvements in Beaver Creek Sewer District trunk sewer from Pearl Street to the Hudson River to mitigate conveying sewer overflows and local flooding at Arch Street and Pearl Street during severe weather events. So in your proposal, it talks about several of the options that are being considered that will be considered in the study. And it is a total project cost for the study of 65,000, requesting an EPG grant of 50,000 for the Albany Water Board, putting in a match of 15,000. So that meets matching requirements for the program, which requires at least 20% match of the grant amount. And that's in alignment with the regional council strategies and the City of Albany 2030 Plan. Moving on to the next funding source, we have the Water Quality Improvement Project Program from DEC. This is the Beaver Creek Clean River Project. So this is a project required under an order of consent by DEC under the CSO Long Term Control Plan. And it's a proposed satellite screening and treatment facility. I'm sure you've probably talked about this as well. I think Joe referenced it earlier. This is the other component of the project in Lincoln Park. And really protecting, preserving, enhancing service water quality in the Hudson River and as well as additional recreational activities and development efforts in the capital district. Total project cost is 45 million, seeking 10 million dollars from the WQIP program. They already have 10 million dollars from an EFC intermunicipal grant. And they would be pursuing financing through the State Revolving Fund of 25 million. So it currently meets the matching requirements and is compliant with all the strategies. And the last one is just the Lincoln Park Reflection and Garden Project that we already talked about. So everybody's here. If there's any questions?
Now, first of all, with the Lincoln Park Recreation Area, the East End Improvement. I had gone and I know the Albany Soccer Club had gone to those meetings. Right now, the soccer club has to play on top of a dunk down on. McCarty Avenue. And you were hoping that they would play soccer, but I don't see any reference to soccer.
So there are projects in the whole master plan and pretty much wasn't that the main thing. Definitely more than offered to down with council members to believe there's a master plan draft. There's definitely projects in that long term building for the park to update the bowl and make it around the ball and fields. But this project really on that slice of the park that's across Eagle Street, were very big first because it was really local community minded and children and families. It was also a little bit further away from the projects that Joe's team, the one everyone are doing because they're going to be doing a lot of construction on the other side of the park. So this one was a quick win. It was right by the community members that really loved this project. But there are field projects in the whole master plan that we've been around for two years.
Because I was at the meetings and gave these little sticky notes and what you wanted to say and stuff like that. And we could have quite a few people come down to advocate for the soccer.
Yeah, and that's definitely what we got in two years. So we sit down, the planning can sit down with you and go through kind of the phases of the project.
Yeah, it probably just made a little bit more sense with construction. So you don't put something in and then need to tear it up.
They do talk about basketball and courts and stuff like that. That's what caught my eye.
Yeah, but the final plan of vernings is that's presented back to the community in January. Pretty much the feedback was confirming some awards for the section of the park. I don't know if we were in the section of soccer, but I think it was the local field.
The field is part of the city element. And there's another field extra which I believe is sitting on, I love you, rugby team clean that up. Now, could this soccer club buy or lease it actually? Then to use, would they have to change hands?
To create a field.
Well, at least to clean up the field or do something.
Would the city own land if I do be part of the future act for us? We're closing up so that our parents will play in the next year.
It's dangerous for kids, but it's a pretty good soccer club. If you see a ball, the kids are just, the kids are bailing because it's dangerous stuff. You know, landfill stuff will come up through the field or whatever. I think, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it is city owned property. It's probably the best asset in the city with having set control and everything. And some of the programs, depending on what the structure is of the entity, like if it's not, like, who doesn't have a legal entity out of a soccer club?
Bill Kelly was ready. He says it's not at that point yet.
If they have a legal entity, depending on what that is, they may be eligible to be able to apply and, you know, do some sort of event through New York or, you know, something.
Just a clarification. So if you have a nonprofit that wants to apply to develop a piece of property, what is the process for them to apply for these?
So there, there's a, there's an application online. Well, there's, so there's a local process and there's the state process. So locally, we ask that applicants that want a letter of support from the mayor or need a resolution from you all to come to us to fill out that intake form, submit that to us. We'll review it, you know, we'll help them draft letters of support and get those approved and reviewed for them. And also, you know, present for the resolutions. That's kind of the local process. As far as the state process, there's an application online. It's regionalcouncils.ny.gov. They go in, they, you know, I don't want to get too in the weeds, but there's a registration process. They register their application. They can go in. There's an application wizard that they can choose to do or choose not to do. If you know what your, what program sources, what funding sources you're eligible for and what you're shooting for, you can skip the wizard and you can pick the programs and you can go in and start filling out your application online. If you don't, there's a wizard where it'll ask you questions like what type of project are you doing? Community development, you know, energy and sustainability, you know, energy efficiency improvements, things like that. And then it'll go through and it'll kind of guide you through what programs might be eligible for your type of application. And then there'll be threshold questions. And those threshold questions for all of the applications, we yes or no questions, and they'll try to steer applicants out of the process if they're not eligible so they don't waste their time. They don't catch everything, but they'll catch most of them. And then they'll go in once they've met the threshold questions and complete the rest of the questionnaire. The deadline this year is July 26th. That's typically been around the deadline for all of the years. And so they'll submit at that point their electronic application. And then awards are made around mid-December technically. State usually says fall, so it's usually mid to late December. And that's when the award announcement is made. And so then after that process, there'll usually be a grant agreement with the state. They'll enter into that with whatever funding source, whatever state agency that they got funded from. And go from there with, with working with that agency.
So the ones who are going to go are the ones that are quicker to submit in 2019.
Yes, yeah. So the ones that you have tonight, they can be given a resolution on Monday or Friday. So that we can get that back to them in time to upload into their application and they can submit their application by the 20th. So that's the situation for folks. You know, there's still time for folks. If they don't require a resolution to try to get an application in, that would be a really tight timeframe to try to, if you didn't have all your ducks in a row at this point. But it's probably been done before. So that time may seem the same in Ashley's being very nice and she says it's pretty tight. She didn't get his application filled out in two weeks. You really want to have a taken up project well before that. So that's why we put the council in early May, a whole workshop in there June to walk people through the process. They should come into our office now really to start talking to us about getting their files together and competitive for next year's round.
And Sarah, it was a helpful tip to go through a series of informational meetings they had at the state halls. The type of meetings, the regional, the development council meetings and trying out about those by signing up for arms letter those out as well. And so, you know, we really backed this sort of that liaison and help for local organizations because it is a pretty detailed and complicated application depending on the size of the entity. It can be challenging for those to, and then if they're not using a refrigerator to be able to crack something that's been competitive, it's making it helpful for the other places to back as well.
And so for the ones that, if you talk to the ones moving forward, they would be trying to do projects that are going to start in 2021 or could potentially wait until 2021. Because the way this works, we'll make these awards the end of 2019. The folks here will be able to start their projects in 2020 provided they get their awards. And then the folks for next year, if they come in, they would get their awards till the end of 2020 and be able to start in 2021. You don't want people to start their projects before they get their funding because that can kind of make them ineligible.
Are there any, any other questions on these? Because these are resolutions that we want to pass for Monday. All right. And hold on one second.
It happens once a meeting, right?
So in terms of, there are seven resolutions that we have. I have 47 related to Beaver Creek as Councilmember Fahy. 48, which is also is Lincoln Park, 48 and 49, which are the Lincoln Park Reflection and Learning Garden Project. That was Ms. Fahy. 50, which is the South Pearl Arch Street CSO Improvements is Mr. Johnson. 51, which is Lincoln Park East End Improvements is Mr. Johnson. 52, which is the Tricentennial Park Redevelopment, I have as council member Love, correct? And 53, related to the Women's Club, I think I'm going to do that one.
You're okay. Good luck. But you'll let me feel that it's most.
That'll be Mr. Agani. I wanted to, if there are no other questions on that, I want to move to another item. So we have an ordinance. Can we have that here or is that? The MC ordinance?
I have all the MC.
Okay. So people have noticed out front, there are some barricades related to falling tiles or bricks or whatever. Oh, Sergio, I didn't see it. So this is under the.
Emergencies.
Right. So they're, they're looking, what the DJ's looking for is authority to do an emergency procurement and bypassing the need to do, you know, put out builds, et cetera, which can happen if the council authorizes it based on an emergency situation, which apparently it is. So I'm going to turn it over to DJ.
It's what my engineer to, to, yeah, technical question. But a couple of days ago, we had a sudden slate tile fall from the steeple here. It's going to two feet high and we were lucky that no one was on the team. But we admittedly secured the area and we had engineers look at it. We had a water pump and drone take a flyby. And it shows us that there are several slates that are loose. And these slates are quite, they're stone and they're quite heavy. Again, it's a 132-year-old roof and it's starting to decay. So we are opposed to go to emergency mode and secure rigging contractor. They have put nets actually, they started today to put safety nets to maintain the, whatever loose, whatever loose ends are there. And now we have a letter description of what needs to be taken place to repair or restore the steeple. We also have, as seen coming, our comprehensive city hall master plan that we have a contract out. We might ask that to take a look at it and start waiting to do that repair for itself. Do you have any questions?
So I have a question. I mean, because we've been doing this master plan and bonding for improvements and maintenance for the building, is this something that was like not on the radar screen or, I mean?
It's, I mean, the commissioner had mentioned it's, it's an old building. We, we know there's multiple issues with this building. One of the biggest concerns and one of the first tasks, we have John G. Wade, the store architecture firm. Everybody's familiar with, they did the windows. They were in charge of that. They've done a lot of work on this building. They are intimately familiar with it to the extent that they can be. They, we just, the city just entered in the contract with them earlier this month, just actually a few days ago. The contract was executed for them to perform the master plan. What we've instructed them to do right now, obviously, this is their first task, to look at the clock tower, to look at the masonry, the roof units. The tower itself, a lot of this building is constructed of granite. There's brownstone. The tiles on the roof of the clock tower are actually brownstone. They vary from approximately five to six inches thick to 10 to 12 inches thick. How these are actually attached, the construction that was done back at that time, we, we really don't know. What the concern was when we got the images from the drone, it was pretty much, I think every side, with the exception of the east side, three to four sides show a good inch and a half, two inches displacement on some of these large stones. So we went out, we got a contractor out from New York City to put, put netting on there. And that, there's going to be a series of netting that will hold those plate, those stones in place in the event that we get further displacement. those stones in place in the event that we get further displacement, and they'll also help to trap any smaller pieces of the grade. Uh, the clock tower's over 200 feet tall, and we're talking a little piece of stone falls off one of these, obviously, we have a, you know, a safety concern here. Uh, the netting would, will stay in place, John G. Wade, we've been in contact with them, they are tentatively scheduled to come out here and do a thorough evaluation of the entire tower later this month, they're in the process of securing a lift, uh, and getting a lift to go to this height, um, is not, is not a simple piece of equipment. So, um, as far as the details of what's going to, what's, what we're going to find up there, uh, we don't know a lot of the details right now, but we do know that we've got concerns of additional, uh, tiles falling, poor pieces of them. So, first things first, we need to secure that, get the netting up, and then we'll have a better idea and a game plan. Uh, the, the roof, it appears, has been patched hundreds of times, and how old those patches are, once you get moisture in there, and the cement material, the sealant that they used for some of these repairs, from what we can tell right now, is actually trapping moisture in there, which is just going to lead to further deterioration of the stones. So, this, this, you know, and then there's a brick, there's masonry units underneath that support this, and what is unknown right now is actually, actually how those tiles are actually attached. So, as part of John G. Wade's, um, scope of their work, they have found original drawings to this, and they are going to be securing those drawings and providing those drawings, which are invaluable, to the city moving, moving forward.
Randy, do we have a sense of when the last time work has been done on that, on the tower?
Um, we don't. I think there was a study that was done back in early 2000s, um, that kind of outlined some of these, these concerns, um, but not to the extent of what we're seeing right now. Uh, I think the company had come up in the past, we could get some vegetation growing up there.
They're going to poll tree.
And anytime you get vegetation growing on the roof, that's really not a good sign, because that means that there's soil, there's the tree being held in there. And again, once moisture gets in there, the stones continue to kind of exfoliate, they kind of peel back, you start to lose a mass of the stone, and like I said, I mean, one little piece of this, these fall, uh, we all, obviously, there's an obvious concern.
What's in front of you is a resolution to allow us to enter the emergency contract, to put the netting, make it safe. The, what he's talking about is a master plan that's already executed, uh, so we don't, we don't, we're not worrying about that, it actually, good thing they points out at the same time, because now, when J.G. Warren comes in and says, you know, this is what our priority would be, is the steeple, let's look at the steeple first, and then they're going to do an overview of the entire roof, and give us a plan of attack, and then to restore it.
Yeah, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I've been concerned about, every winter, after a snowstorm or ice storm, we have a barricade in front, is that the master plan going to take care of that with whatever snow or ice is sliding on?
Yeah, originally, the building was constructed, there was a, was a heated system up there that helped to melt the snow, and over the years, and we're not talking anytime recent, that those systems were default, uh, were ignored and never repaired, and they're to the point right now where they're absolutely obsolete, but that is something that's, that's definitely a concern, and it's going to be looked at within the big picture of things. We're really looking at this evaluating this building, securing the envelope, and as well as looking at the HVAC, plumbing, the electrical, it's, it's a pretty comprehensive plan.
We did, we did some repairs last year on the side of the building, where HR really is, and there was a major leak, and we found out that some of the tiles began, were loose, allowing the snow to settle, and then as it melted, went right through the wall, and we were able to accommodate a, a, a small repair, knowing that we were going to have this master plan coming down and saying, you know, we're finding out a lot of different things, that, that, you know, this side of the building seems to be a lot better than the other side of the building, I don't know why, but, you know, maybe...
Just exposure.
There's an exposure, or whatever it might be. But we're finding out that there are some patches in, in some part of the roof, but we don't know what was done and how it was done.
We don't, with the master plan, that's the most question. They, they have indicated in the past, uh, when we met with them, we initially had a kickoff meeting with them in May, and, uh, they said that they would pretty much be done with their work in the springtime, so...
For one year?
Uh, yeah, we, we hope to have the entire final plan, uh, this, this coming spring, 2020.
Okay, so they're going to come up with a plan, and then we've got to fix what are the plans?
Then we've got to prepare the funds to...
Yes, that gives us a better handle on how we're looking to budget and prioritize things, but, but obviously, this is one of our main concerns, as, as well as visiting, the roof is...
Roof, the steps in front, it, it is, it's a comprehensive plan, it's just that one, one focus, a company, like we said, we're going to seal the envelope inside, you know, making sure, and then it was up to us to decide what recommendation they give us, and say, this is your weakest point, you should probably have funds for this, and maybe do partially every year, or something throughout, but we get the plan, we're really going blind, and, uh, now, but we know that things that need to be done, but we don't know what extent they need to be done.
Right.
You know, one of the things that we're concerned with, and engineering is concerned, is the trusses, are the trusses still good, are the trusses, you know, those are the things that, we see moisture, but what this plan is going to give, give us is take a deep dive in and say, no, the trusses are fine, all you need is the terracotta, or whatever stone you might need. We want to, obviously, maintain the historical content and importance.
Can I help?
I don't know if this is ever before, uh, came a little late, um, what would be the proximity cost on this ankle work?
For, for the clock tower, you were yourself? Well, the netting, the netting we have, we have a cost, and I think that the cost was around $33,000 for them to install the netting. Uh, for us to try to come up with costs for a roof replacement here, masonry, we don't know the extent, we'd be, we'd be speculating at best at this point. Uh, but the roof, it, it's terracotta tile, I mean, for, you're talking if, just, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars just in scaffolding alone, to do work to get access to these areas, so...
So we might want to do partial, we might do one side one year, and then the front next year, you know, you're talking about hundreds, thousands of dollars, if you want to do it all at once. So we might want to plan that.
You've got to give them applications.
Huh?
Well, that's, that's another...
Well, that's another thing, binding.
Another master plan, and we're not going to, we'll look at the funding, funding source.
Historical society, and, yeah, historical New York grant, or whatever.
Is there an immediate cost?
Thirty-three thousand dollars.
So 33,000 is, which you already heard.
Put in the, put in the, we already contracted out as an emergency, to put the nets up, secure it, and it's loose up there.
So we, yes.
So this, all this, this is, no, I mean, this just allows you to then contract, probably jump, wait to come up with a, a plan?
No, 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 this is, this is just to book the netting.
This is just for the netting.
We're kind of getting ahead of ourselves here, but...
Thirty-three thousand dollars.
But there's not, you're not contracting, you have to fix this up right away.
No, 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 no.
The 33,000 dollars is for the rigger to get up there, secure the tiles, wet netting, make it safety, so that other tiles don't fall down.
We're just talking about spending 33,000.
That's it.
That's it.
The master plan's totally different.
Yeah, the master plan, we had funding for that as well, it's just, this, like Sergio said, this is kind of dumb luck that this happened, and we have a consultant on board, a very good consultant.
So it's just netting, but it's, it's permeable, so...
Oh, yeah.
What I want to expand is, are the bell tower, they replaced Jeff Ryan's up there in front, is that's going to be used?
No, no.
Now, does this happen after storms, do they notice how loud storms last a couple of weeks?
There was some heavy rains a couple of days before, but, you know, the situation with the leak that I've mentioned before that we repaired this year, when it rained, poured rain, we had no, no leakage. When it drizzled, it leaked, so we, we couldn't figure out something, we repaired it. Um, there was no major storm or wind storm that we could point that's, that's a problem, uh, it just came down like that.
I was just thinking, if there was a storm, then we have...
We can claim insurance, yes, yes, we already vetted that.
And that tower that came down, we didn't cover, who let me, we didn't expose the water to get in, you know, but it's...
The net would be over.
No, then, what, what fell off the roof was a small, was a small piece of material, which led us to take a closer look at things, and then the commissioner had mentioned, we got a drone up there, and once we got the footage from the drone...
You could see the gaps.
And you could see displacement of the stone up there, you could see other issues to the extent that, you know, you could see from what the photo showed. It's, obviously, it's 200, over 200 feet in the air, it's not easily accessible, or can you really see things, even looking at binoculars from the ground level, so this will...
Does buildings have their own drone yet?
What's that?
Does buildings department have their own drone yet?
No, we use the water department.
Yeah, Joe Coffee.
We, we call the water department, they have a licensed pilot, license, and then we had a drone to take a flyby, just to see how, how bad of a situation it was, and it turned out it was pretty bad.
Are there any other questions on this? Okay, so this would be a pass for Monday, there'd actually be two motions involved, one majority consent to add it to the agenda, uh, and then once it's added, we'd have to do a second, uh, motion, uh, requesting unanimous consent to pass it on the same night as its introduction.
So stay tuned. Thank you, and stay tuned, until we get the report and figure out what's going on as it comes, throughout the, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we can, uh...
Yes, no.
Okay, thanks, guys. I guess we can move back to the beginning?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, there was nothing on local laws, on, uh, nothing on the ordinances held, correct?
No, but then we had this MC.
And then, which one was that?
One you just discussed.
Yeah, so we're going to have, for the, for the ordinances, we have 1472-19R is the one we just discussed. So that will be an MC, and then a UC. On resolutions, on new resolutions, uh, the first one, number 46, is by councilmembers Dorsay and Love, um, related to, uh, care for sickle cell, uh, disease patients, uh, that will be, and I think we had someone who spoke at public comment in our last meeting, was it?
Yeah.
On this, uh, so this will be a, proposed for pass for Monday night. Uh, all members wish to be cosponsors?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, we did resolutions 47 through 53. Um, 54 is my resolution. This relates to the issue of dirt bikes and ATVs on public streets, uh, and the public safety issues, uh, which is legal, uh, that they create. Um, I know a number of members will probably have issues in their wards about what's going on with these, I know that...
A couple months ago.
Yeah, well, I was up on Central Avenue, once where they just rolled all around me too. Um, you know, it's not an easy issue to deal with, you don't want to engage in high-speed chases, um, but trying to find ways of dealing with it. Um, I know the department is using drones to try to identify areas, et cetera, um, another way of dealing with it, uh, some cities do use reward programs, another issue, way of looking at, way of dealing with also, is to create, um, opportunities for recreational use, um, which is hard for us in the city, because we don't have a lot of land for it, but that is another area that, there's, has been some discussion on that, um, but there is the, uh, which is not going to totally eliminate the problem, because this, it's a much larger problem, it's not just confined to Albany, it's a nationwide problem also. Uh, so there is, um, authorization in state law, what, did you want something?
Good job, sorry. I was saying, no turner, it's going to be, you may be...
There is authority in state law, uh, to establish reward programs, we actually do have a reward program on the books, uh, related to drug-related information, I don't know how successful it's been, some cities have used reward programs. So this resolution would simply authorize the chief of police to develop a program, uh, and standards and guidelines consistent with what state law allows. It doesn't create, doesn't implement it right away, but it gives the authority, it has to be initiated by the council, uh, and so it's, it's an authorization to the chief. Uh, the chief does support it, we talked about it, uh, mayor supports it also, um, so that's what it is. Tom? I don't know, it, it's, I see it as, well, just a tool, it's not going to solve the problem, but it's another tool that might be helpful. Uh, there's no one solution to this thing. Tom?
Yeah, my concern is, um, e-bikes and little scooters, but it doesn't go beyond...
It doesn't go beyond, no. No, it's just, it's just meant to deal with, and the intent is, the ATVs and dirt bikes, uh, and their use, their illegal use on public streets. Or, or on sidewalks, because they, they also go on sidewalks too, I've seen...
No.
Yes.
I just have a question. Um, as far as like alternative, is it Tibbely Park, some of the ATVs?
I believe at one time Tibbely Park was used, uh, that, or they were being used over there, I don't know if that was allowed or illicit, but...
It wasn't, it wasn't an official, it's a park, I mean, it's, it's a preserve, you don't want ATVs riding around in there, but that's where they congregated, and that's where they were, but now...
There was a time, when Tibbely Park was pretty much not really, was kind of ignored and not maintained, and we're now doing a lot of effort to try to reclaim Tibbely Park as an aged preserve, uh, et cetera, so it's not an appropriate use over there.
I was really shocked, I was going down, um, South Lake, I guess it was, at how big some of these ATVs are, and the guy that was on it, he had, he had his face all wrapped up, so you couldn't see who it was, it was like, it was like out of Mad Max, I was really, uh, I could see, I mean, they're incredibly dangerous, and, you know...
I drove all the way?
No, I wanted to tell people, remind people, we haven't seen, that there is a forum on use of drones, because drones are something that can be used to help combat this, and everybody, it's next week, July 16th, at, hey, Bernie and Paul, 375 Ontario Street, because the drones have so much possibilities in terms of, are deteriorating housing status, help, moving, abandoned buildings opened up, um, and...
They've had some meetings, I know one got canceled. They've had meetings on these drones before, and no one can cancel it, I don't know how many they got through. Some people have to try to say it's true.
There were some concerns that was raised, they had it at St. Rose a couple of months ago, and, uh, there were some individuals that would like to see this type of presentation dubbed, actually, in the lower...
So we're talking about drones now, not that ATVs?
Yeah, yeah. All right, somebody just give me brief.
Yes, this is the ACAC forums on drones.
It's an ongoing discussion, it's an ongoing discussion, they haven't finalized anything, I don't think they've had the drones yet, but, uh, this is just another conversation, a continuation from the conversation that happened at St. Lawrence.
And the chief was willing to come and do a presentation here, just not have, been able to put it together.
So what are the person, do you think drones have...
But isn't drones, as you said, they're going to be getting one? But this one is, uh, yeah, they're, they're... And I think EGF should happen, where they have the power, you know, just make...
For some reason, it's just...
Well, every department can have a new toy, there should, there should be something they can share.
Well, that's why...
So, back on topic here, I'm sorry. Uh, what, I mean, i- it's just an authorization for the chief to develop a plan, that he would then submit the plan back to the council for review, um...
Yeah, I would like to...
There's just a timeframe here also in terms of...
I would like to refer to committee, because I do have some concerns, uh, how this will impact, uh, the overall, uh, being that, uh, probably the majority of the ATV usage are probably, I'm going to say, uh, minority individuals.
Could be, I mean, it's all, it's all...
I wanted to, um, I wanted to actually, you know, look into a little bit further before we...
Okay, we'll put it in the public safety committee. It's not, so it's not something that's going to happen very soon, it's just, you know... Um, on, well, actually, no, we have a couple of MCs also on resolutions. Um, so, remind me what we have here.
We have an BCA appointment.
55?
Yes.
All right, so, the mayor has submitted, um, the Adriana LeBlanc, 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 who some people may remember, she was former court council's office, for appointment to the border zoning appeals. Uh, so we're going to, that, that... Uh, so, we're gonna, that, that does have a 45-day clock on it. Um, that is resolution 55-72-19R. That'll be by council member Fahy. Uh, and will be a referral to the planning committee.
55-72?
Yes, 55-72 is for Adriana. Um, 56-72-19R, it's a resolution by Mr. Igo Foinhoi. This relates to the New Scotland Avenue project, uh, and a request that a full environmental impact, uh, statement be produced in it, on it. I mean, we've had speakers on this, and, uh, you know, Pete Sheen was here at the last one, uh, and this resolution is...
Anybody want a copy?
So, this resolution is not binding, correct? It would just...
Right, right, no. Not binding. And if anybody didn't get it, Pete Sheen, sending distributed, okay, he's giving mail box out here.
It should, it'll go to the planning committee, and I hope, maybe you can turn that around so we can have it at the next meeting? I know you got a lot on your plate, but...
I don't know, I need to...
Okay. No, well, actually, our next meeting is going to be for a while, so...
Oh.
This is a five Monday month.
Is it about to be on that time?
Yeah, yeah, so if you can get something, so maybe it can be ready for the August meeting.
No, it's, it's still extended.
Also, can I ask, before, let me go back to ordinances and Judy's ordinance on...
Blue roof.
The blue roofs?
Yeah.
The 29th.
Can we, what's the 29th?
That, it's on the planning committee for the 29th.
29.
Oh, okay. Uh, oh, so you have a meeting on the 29th. Then maybe you can put this, that resolution on the 29th also. Um, can we do the public hearing then for our next meeting in August? Because that also requires a public hearing.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay?
That's what's the date on that?
The next meeting will be August.
August 1st.
All right, so our next meeting, um, because we have five Mondays in July, so it's going to be August 5th. So, we will try to do the public hearing for Judy's ordinance at that meeting. And you're gonna, the planning committee will meet on it prior to that. And so, if all goes well, uh, that can come up for a vote on August 5th. The EIS gen item will be on also for your next, that 29th then?
The what?
The one Joe's resolution, yeah. And since planning will be here, we can have that whole discussion. Be a nice night. Uh, that will be on...
Well, we should put Adriana LeBlanc on, same thing.
And you can put Adriana, that will be the easiest one, 29th.
We might want to do that first.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh... Judy's, and then, well, Adriana's, and then, what's the wish?
The green roof?
Yeah, that's 530.
What was confirmed for...
All of them. All of them confirmed for the parking authority?
No, I'm sorry, so the parking authority...
No doubt, I can remind them.
Okay. The parking authority is this week, correct?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And then the 29th, have you polled people on that one yet, or is that...
It's confirmed.
Oh, it is confirmed. Oh, okay. Oh, good. Works out good.
If somebody's right here, the plant, it's in front of the planning board now, they have a meeting coming. They could actually approve this, in Scotland, before, I think it's unlikely, if they do, we could still pass the resolution, and they could still...
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to pass this without having that discussion, and also, frankly, involving the planning department at that, at the planning committee, we need to have that discussion on it. So, I mean, we have had public comment, but it is a policy-related issue that does need to go through a committee process. Um, I'm not sure where, what is the status of that project right now? Has it had a...
It got BCA of working variance.
Well, the B, that's, that's not, I mean, the more important one...
It's just going back...
The BCA just does area variances now, really.
Only they know.
Yeah. So, where, in terms of the planning board process, at what stage is it?
They had a workshop in the...
The workshop, okay. They have a planning, uh, the board meeting?
On Tuesday, we were planning... They had a workshop on the floor.
Yeah, they used to go three times, they go three times.
What was the discussion at the workshop? Because sometimes, I don't know if anybody was there at that...
Judy was there last night, but she's not here, but she's at that.
Okay. All right. Were there any other, I, I'm thinking of it, was there any other MCs on resolutions, or that was it?
There's, there's, just these two.
Yeah, that's all I have.
I have one for the school district, but I asked court council to wait on it because it's not something that needs to go right away.
You know, as far as this resolution, okay, it's not binding, but I think we have to fight then, it does no harm, it's only good, and if we go through it, I don't know, it's...
Well, Joe, if there's, that process is involved, and I think we need to, your planning department has, like, what thought went into making a decision not to go through the full environment?
So, I think you can also, if you would like, you can do a statement or a letter or whatever to the planning board, or speak at the planning board, indicating that this is an issue, that the council is considering this, uh, and that they should hold up...
They shouldn't see this when they know, they know, right?
Well, they already know, they already know, uh, that they should hold up potentially. And I don't know, I mean, Judy would have a better idea in terms, if she was at that workshop, in terms of what the discussion was.
It's some head stuff, or, like, I found out some information on USDO that I don't think most of the councilors are really happy. That, and basically what it, what it says, there's a hidden line in there that says, the planning board can override every variance and allow anything to go through. So, I mean, that's scary. Because the ordinance is a long year in the county council. I mean, you guys don't even work for this USDO, and I know it's very difficult to...
Yeah, could you give me, it's, gives, let me email a citation on that?
Um, no, Judy's work.
Okay. I know I saw Judy's letter. She, yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, moving on, on some other areas, on the resolutions held, um, 5, 6, and 7 relate to appointments to the parking authority. Uh, they're all on the, uh, planning agenda for tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And so, assuming that they come out of the planning committee tomorrow, there'll be a pass for Monday.
If there's a person, uh, who's signed up for the planning board, okay, Todd taking on that?
You mean, you mean Adriana?
Yes.
Yeah, she's zoning board, not planning board, zoning board. Yeah, zoning board and planning board do have a clock, 45 days. Um, item number eight by Mr. Anani is the, uh, women's club resolution. Did, were you planning on doing a presentation on that?
No, Matt, I'm going to present it to them at the...
Okay, so that'll be a pass?
At the fundraiser.
All right. And then, Joyce, your resolution on senior services, we weren't here, so we had, didn't have a chance to discuss in terms of what you wanted to do, or, um...
Well, um, I thought that, at some point, that you was looking at some of that senior services also. Just, just the last six weeks, I've, we've gotten a lot of complaints from seniors, there's just nothing to do. We used to have the senior service building over on Delaware...
Yeah, Delaware Avenue.
Yeah, across from Price Chappers, they closed that. Um, I know, um, something came up on Facebook saying that the park crossed from 45 Century Avenue, some times apart, that, that would have any vengeance, but I, I can tell you why they would have a...
Well, I, I know why they don't have any vengeance, yeah.
That almost people were sleeping on the park was a mess.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, needles and everything, drugs, you know.
So, the pass for Monday?
So, I mean, I mean, they did, they did open up something in, at, on Central Avenue also, call, I think the senior services calls themselves lifespan, or something like that nowadays. Uh, I'm not sure to what extent, it's, it's, the building is also owned by the Northeastern Association of the Blind, and they have a couple of tenants. Uh, one of the tenants is senior services. I'm not sure to what extent that that's a walk-in service, you know, center or whatever. Um, and our budget resolution did talk about some of these issues, and actually, we brought up at the last leadership meeting, uh, we had requested, you know, because we do 26,000, I think, which goes to senior services in our budget, um, and we had asked for the, the vouchers that document the services provided, and, uh, we haven't been getting them. That was in our budget resolution, so we reemphasized that. I don't think the administration ever reads our budget resolutions because they had no idea what we're talking about.
There's also a conversation, uh, around looking at how the city interfaces with the county, because they have, uh, Department of Aging, Albany County, that we wanted to take a look at.
But I'm not sure to what extent the county, well, the county doesn't, I don't, the county doesn't actually provide direct services, because the county always used to work through, uh, senior services of Albany, when they were here. Um, and they used to provide funding to senior services for things like that, but, um, and you know, different, you know, Colony has their own senior centers and stuff like that.
And that's what we're looking for, something, you know, like a nobody smith, uh, maybe like six weeks ago, we cooked for the seniors over there, and, um, she bought some games, where they could play some games, and, uh, she showed them how to...
So, I guess the question...
So, I'm looking for, I'm basically looking for something right close to some of our seniors, because they, most of them don't have the cars, and there's no buses running from our senior building up there.
Is the Department of Rex, when it is?
Well, that's the question.
That's too, that's a part of it also, they have some...
They do provide senior services, some services.
Some programs, like yoga, swimming, and a few, a few dance classes.
Right, right.
So, the question is, did you want to do this for a pass Monday, or did you want to use the vehicle to have some more discussion on it before we...
Do you have, anybody else have any thoughts on this?
Hi, you know, I, in Pat's office, we just had somebody call from, tell us about they applied for Meals on Wheels, and we can't even get anybody on the phone, so I just think that maybe, you know, it's a, it's a small after-profit, and maybe they're struggling, you don't know, so I was wondering if they...
Well, I don't know, but it's, yeah, I mean, that, that's why we want it, because I think some of the...
Senior services of Albany, yes.
I think some of the money that we provide, that 26,000, which we've never increased, it's always been, as long as I've been here.
So, maybe it would be helpful to have them in...
I think some of that goes for Meals on Wheels, or some of it is, the county funds some of that too, I think.
Well, they do meals over there.
Yeah, they do meals, yes, they do, they, they have competent areas where they do meals, and then they do the Meals on Wheels program as well.
Right.
So, do you want to, uh, hold it and then use this, have, maybe get a presentation on some sort, here for caucus?
Yeah, we could do that, we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do that, yeah, that'd be great.
So, what if these senior services of Albany, should we have the Department of Aging too?
Well, let me talk, let me figure it out, because in terms of the different services, because recreation does do that, so it might be a couple of different ones. And get a better sense as to what, how, if county aging, if they just fund, provide funding to organizations, I don't think that they provide direct services.
Can we invite the county to come in and work with us?
Sure.
It's, you know, you hear about the service, senior service programs out in the suburbs, I mean, they're, they're pretty expensive, so what if we had senior services?
It's not even introduced yet.
No?
Sports, and you would get introduced on the end colony.
Yeah, there wasn't really very complicated the exception.
So, we should find out, and then the county should support it.
I have a question, anybody? The YMCA of Washington Avenue, anybody know anything about that?
Resolution, so, I mean, they were anticipating that.
Briefly about that, but no, no, other than Cory.
All right.
Has anyone think of, I've had leadership meetings about the Albany YMCA?
No.
The one on Washington Avenue, I mean, that's, that's terrible, just sitting there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have asked about that in terms of, because people have inquired, some people thought capitalized all they had gotten.
Something like in the council one night, said he was going to rehab it and this and that, but that was probably...
Um, I, I haven't been able to pin down exactly who or has, some people said the attorney general had it.
It went back, I think, yeah, after...
Financially, they are struggling. I have a friend that's on the board, and she talks...
Of where, of the Y or of the, uh...
The GW building?
Yeah.
GW.
Not the Y.
Not the Y?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, they, either they, either they lost the building and it's been taken over, or something else. But I heard, at one point, I heard the attorney general's office had it, but I don't, I haven't been able...
Well, they did, they did, because of...
Because of...
Where the smart stuff?
Yes, okay, so that's where it is.
You know what? There's no Ys left in Albany, because they just closed the last one. They are looking for a totally new one, they said centralized, but...
Right.
It's got sold to the school.
And that's not too centralized, but why, why where it is, they take their money...
So, how do we get someone to find out this?
We've been, I've been asking, no one's been able to, you know, I'll ask again, but...
For which one?
For the GW, the building, the old Y. Who's running it?
I have a contact, I mean, one of my friends on the board.
Who's running it, what's going on?
Yeah, I could try to get that.
Yeah, okay. I, I think, Chuck, in terms of what the Y wants to do as far as replacing the North Albany one and having something central, I don't know if they're looking at, I don't, I don't think they'd be looking at that, but...
Well, they were saying it's south end, okay? That's not central, that's a...
No, I don't know if it's going to be the south end, or it's going to be someplace more central. I, I don't know.
I heard they're looking, did you hear they're looking in part south at one point?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
It's not like...
There's not much...
In one of the community center areas, I wonder, no?
There's not really, it's just, I don't know, the, the tri-city development has some space, but I don't think it's big enough for, unless it's a satellite.
Cory's not, we'll be here Monday for his letter.
Uh, he said it'll be Monday, but he's not, he asked me to print this out and have whoever was willing to sign on to it, sign it.
For the nurses?
For the nurses, yeah. I'll just, just pass it around, and, and what I'll do is...
I haven't read it yet, so I can just look at it.
And I'll just leave, can I just leave it with you, Michelle?
You actually want our signature?
I sent it, I sent it to you, emails too.
Yeah, we got the email right here. Do you want us to sign it?
That's what he said. He called me at the last minute and asked me to...
If you want to sign on.
I, folks, I can't hear.
You got it, I can fill it, actually.